Good morning. It is 10:00 AM on March 7, 2023. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisal with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have one change to the agenda this morning. We're pulling item number, additional item number one for Veterans Affairs and moving that to another agenda. So I would entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda with that noted change.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Headens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing no one step forward, we will close public comment number one and move to consideration of the proclamation and recognition of March 2023 as International Women's History Month in Story County. Supervisor Merkin, would you like to start?
Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of their life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home, and?
Whereas women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation, and whereas women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation, and whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement and have served our country courageously in the military, and?
Whereas women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the about, I can't say that, abolitionist movement and emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as International Women's History Month. We take this as a time to celebrate the accomplishments and milestones of women all over the world. I move the proclamation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Headens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
And I believe we have a lot of, a lot of employees here to come participate in a photo. I always have to put myself back together. Okay, moving next to agency reports, we have the Bridge Home update. Good morning. You're just gonna want to make sure you speak directly into your microphones. You might have to pull them close to you because they're sensitive.
Okay.
There you go.
I had a rock band. No. All right. Well, good morning supervisors. As always, it's a pleasure to be here today to chat with you about last year and about where things are headed with the Bridge Home. I'm going to just give a very quick, short overview of some of the things that we saw in FY22 and then just happy to answer any questions that you have. So, once again, FY22 was a record-breaking year for us. We had, again, more numbers of individuals and families who came to our door in need of all of the services that we provide. The number of people experiencing homelessness in our communities unfortunately continues to go up. And for a third year in a row, families in need continued to grow. There was an 88% increase in the number of children under the age of 18 served. And that, that's a hard one to, to digest. And currently, the only way we can provide emergency shelter for families is to use motel rooms. And so that is, as you all know, not a viable long-term solution to providing emergency shelter for families, which is something that we are working on long-term. What can we do to make that more efficient, to make it better for families? Because we know that this probably isn't going to stop anytime soon. We also, the total number of individuals who entered our shelter increased by 31%. We reached an all-time high of 955 individuals being served through our emergency shelter. And as it always has been, shelter is our first priority. If we cannot reach people on the street, get them into shelter, we can't get them housed and back to being a contributing member of our community. So we work very hard to serve the people who need us as best we can with our limited facilities. As you all know, we currently are housed out of a 100-year-old plus home. We have 11, 12, we've added a couch for men, so we have 11 beds for men and six for women. We've also added a cot for women, a two, I believe, so that increases that space from six to eight for women. Our unduplicated numbers for also increased by 30%. So we are, we have new people coming through. As you can see there also on, we averaged 20 days from homeless to housed. So people aren't hanging out in the shelter where our, our goal is to always work with them, get them moving into a stable situation so we can open up the few beds we do have for those others that we know need us. Our housing programs also grew substantially. We served nearly 440 people in getting them into stable housing through our housing programs, which is a 25% increase from fiscal year '21. And because we know there is a increasing need for services, we know that there are times when people need to come to shelter and we have to turn them away. And every time we have to do that, it breaks our heart because we are there to help them and serve them. But unfortunately, the way we are set up with our facilities now and with our funding, we can't just open motel rooms to take everybody in. Because that's our option right now. That's $60 a night at least. So that's not an economical choice. We are working on getting 12 additional beds. We had private non-asset funding that allowed us to renovate the lower level of our duplex so we can add additional beds to try to get more people in the facility and not have to open up more motel rooms. While we were working on those renovations, we were also working to find revenue streams outside of asset to help us bring on additional staff that we need to open that duplex. We did not have funding for those additional staff in our current FY23 budget, which is why we need to find that funding above and beyond what our budget was. That was the direction we received from our board. We need to have it open seven days a week. We need five more shelter staff members to be able to have that open overnight and open seven days. We have received some funding, private funding for that. We have some community partners that are really, really know the need, but we've not been able to get enough to be able to open those doors yet. At a minimum, we need three people and then it could be open five days a week. You know, thinking we could do a Wednesday through a Sunday or something such as that. But we do not yet have the total amount of funding we would need to add those three people. We continue to work on this. We're reviewing hours and staffing. We currently have to see if there's any way we could maybe shift a staff member that we already have and we'd only need two more new people. So we're working on that. That's part of our strategic plan for this year. Our full intent is still to open the doors for those additional beds this fiscal year. It has not gone as quickly as we wanted it to. We wanted it to open in July. We're working with a potential large private donor who, after about three or four months of mauling, said that they were not going to provide funding for it. So that was a big blow in getting this open as quickly as we wanted. And while we are, we're working with other folks, those other folks weren't going to give us at that level that we were asking that other private funder. So long-term, we are continuing to work on our plans to increase our facility capacity. So we have long-term solutions. We are working on building a new campus. I am sure you heard that we received the National Housing Trust Fund grant for $4.1 million. That is going to allow us to build our family shelter and housing unit. Will be a three-story building with 18 family units in it that range from three, two, one, and efficiency apartment units. This will allow us to get families quickly into shelter. But the units will also allow us to house families there in a longer-term lease situation, providing them with an affordable housing option. So it's going to be able to do both of those things for us. Currently, we are intending to break ground on that in July. And with the hope that a year later, we'd be just about ready to roll with that new facility. We also have plans to build a three-story individual shelter building that would have 20 beds for men, 20 beds for women. These would be single-room occupancy units. It will not be a congregate shelter. As HUD does not fund congregate shelters any longer. And I don't know if you saw, but a few months ago, there was a really good article in the Des Moines Register about why congregate shelter doesn't work. It will also provide us with a day center so that if there is inclement weather, people can stay there instead of having to go to the library or somewhere else during the day while their rooms are empty. It also provides space, if we don't have people in shelter, to come in and do laundry, take showers, get food, meet with caseworker, research for apartments or jobs, and, you know, gives us that flexibility, as I said, to allow people to be able to shelter in there during the day if the weather is inclement. So we are hoping that the project in all will be done by the end of calendar year '25, early '26. And right now, we are on track for that. Well, a year from now, we'll know a little bit more with the completion of the entire campus. We'll be able to nail that date down even closer. That's what we're looking at right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
I have a couple of questions. Congratulations on receiving the grant $4.1 million. I, my understanding of what you're saying is that does the 18 family units. And then you talked about a separate building that had 20 beds each for men and women. Is that also, is that a separate amount, separate funding then?
Yes, that is separate funding. We have some private funding that we're working on that. We've also been talking with Vanessa about potential options with their ARP money. If our project would qualify for that, it qualifies. But if that's the decision the city will make, you know, remains to be seen how that whole process goes. You guys know what that's like also, but that would be another source. The state of Iowa also has their ARP money coming up. While it says it cannot be used to build shelter, it does have funding for capacity expansion and operations, which would also help this project with some, just some of that base funding.
So let me just summarize. You have the $4.1 million for the 18 family units. You're looking for funding for the separate building that you're talking about with the 20 each male and female. Okay, I just want to make sure of that. Now, the second thing is, whenever we talk about grants, we've got to talk about what's the long-range plan? What's the sustainability? You're currently not able to open the remodeled duplex because you don't have money for staffing. Does this $4.1 million bring staffing?
It does not. That operational funding does, but that is also one-time money. We have a three-year strategic plan where we have outlined our sustainable growth in the staffing that we know we will need, which allows us to be able to do it in a manner that we can gradually build to the staff we're going to need there. In addition, we have endowments that we are building so that we will also be able to take some runoff from that, as well as our annual grant writing process, our private fundraising process to sustain the operations going forward.
So what are your numbers? What do you need for staffing? And yeah, what, what's it gonna cost to staff these?
For the new unit, we, depending on how we, how the program runs, we need at least three people, seven days a week. That's just to keep a door open. But then on top of that, we need at least five assistants to help during the day with phone answering, intakes, et cetera. We, right now, are right around, I believe, 12 shelter staff. So when, for the new facility, we are estimating we'd need to have at least 20. Being in that new facility also gives us efficiencies with staff just because we're not into separate buildings. We are not, clients have single sleeping rooms, which helps with safety and security. So it will be much more efficient and we, it, you know, it may sound like, oh gosh, you're gonna need 34 staff. But the reality of it is, where we're headed right now, it, it will probably be able to be pretty flat just because of the efficiencies of the fact that the building is being built for a purpose and more efficient.
I'm confused. You said you have 12 staff. You'll need 20. Are you talking about 20 on top of 12 or 20 total? And then you said it's gonna be pretty flat. Those aren't consistent.
So we have 12 staff right now. We will need 20 is what we're estimating, so we'll need to add eight. But if you look at our strategic planning and our sustainable growth plan, that takes us very slowly to that point. It's not us looking at this year going, boom, we have to add five more staff. That plan allows us to do it in a way that's sustainable and easy to grow.
Is your strategic plan available to us?
Yes, it will be. We have a retreat with our board this month to get it all finalized and approved. And as soon as that is done, we will share that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jody, hi. Nice to see you. Couple of questions for you that I have. So you mentioned first off about the emergency shelter being your number one priority and that you had to turn people away. Can you just talk to me a little bit more on that reasoning?
We have to turn people away?
Right.
Okay. Well, there is, there are situations where people have been there for 30 days already. And the, the limit is 30 days for, if that is the case, we don't just turn our back on them. If they want to find housing in our community, we'll continue to work with them on that. They just won't be physically in the shelter. We sometimes have to turn people away because of some past issues and there may be a no trespass order in place. And then, of course, we have our capacity issue. If we have 12 men in the shelter and eight women in a shelter, which we consistently do, we don't have, at this point in time, any other beds to put them in or any other large space. One option that we've tried to explore, especially during inclement weather, is is there an open building anyplace when the weather is bad where we could put cots in, have some of our staffing there, and people can come in and get off the streets so they don't freeze or overheat? That would be a great, short-term, quick solution. To find that space, however, we, we're gonna need some help with the, the community and the leaders in the community.
And you mentioned at times that you use hotels and the cost of hotels. So how many hotel rooms do you have?
We use two motel rooms unless there's inclement weather. And then we will open up more rooms if the funding allows us to on a kind of a weather-based timeframe.
And then the, and I understand that your, your comment that you're still in the renovations of the 12-bed complex, but it sounds like you've got six of them renovated. Is that a location that can be utilized for emergency shelter or?
That is, that, what we want to utilize that for is to expand the number of beds that we have. And the way we have that set up, it would be a situation where it could be men, women, and a family if needed because it's all right there on one floor. We'd have staff members there the entire time that clients were in there. And that would allow us to get folks off the street and at least into a bed for the night. There's only 12, so I have a feeling that we may still have some folks above and beyond that. But at least, at least it's something for now until we get the new facility.
Gotcha, gotcha. And then I'm looking at the report that you provided and thank you for that. And I should have brought my other notes up, but I'm looking at page five and you've got a graph. It says FY22 number of clients served. And so you have 3,761 total clients served and 657 total clients served, which I'm assuming the unique is unduplicated.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if you have Story County, it's 71% of unique clients served. That comes to about 466. And yet, on page, I know I'm nitpicking a little bit, but I'm just trying to understand. I, I, I'm just trying to figure out the, the, the numbers because I, I should have brought my asset book because I didn't see that the numbers for unduplicated for all your services equaled that number. I thought it was more like 455.
That's just for Story County in scorecard. This is the whole region.
No, I understand that. You're showing 71% from the folks in the entire region are Story County. And so I'm looking at the unique clients and so I'm taking 71% of those unique clients. And then I'm coming up with 466 for Story. I could be wrong, but since you're putting that way, why are the numbers different on what you provide in the asset scorecard information compared to what you put in your documents here? It, it's really hard to follow.
So if you're looking just at shelter in scorecard, it says 499.
Right.
The, the total, like all county numbers, those, we are still working on getting them to the penny. The data system we have doesn't allow us to do that. We manually track Story County, so we can report on those. We have a new data system and I've been sharing this for the past few years now. We finally have a new in-house client database system we're implementing this March where we'll be able to track all the counties individually, which will make these numbers much more accurate. So the reason that that discrepancy is there is because the all-county numbers, we have to pull out of the government database and make some assumptions based on the number of Story County people that we know because we track that separately, what that may be.
That, I mean, it'll be helpful to have that because even adding your emergency shelter unduplicated and your other housing unduplicated, they, they don't match up. They still don't match up.
Yes, and we've been struggling with this since I came on board and I've shared that openly. We are using Excel to track a lot of things and we know those things can, formulas can get messed up. But we are confident in our Story County numbers as reported in the scorecard because of that separate tracking.
Then my, thanks. Then my next question is on page 16. It's the overall trends observed. It's the overall trends observed in twenty twenty-three. You've got FY twenty-three and FY twenty-two Story County individuals served. Do you see the page that I'm on?
Twenty-three.
No, it's page, I think it's sixteen. And it's a graph and it says FY twenty-three and twenty-two Story County individuals served.
Okay.
Okay, so my question is under shelter. You've got, it looks pretty even there and you said even increased by thirty percent for shelter. Why? Well, you've got FY twenty-two and then your projected FY twenty-three. They're exactly the same. Why is that?
When you said. FY twenty-two was compared to FY twenty-one.
But this says FY twenty-three and FY twenty-two.
Correct. The numbers with the percentages are comparing FY twenty-two to the whole prior year. When I'm putting in an FY twenty-three numbers for you, it's just to give you an idea mid-year where we're tracking. So that percentage isn't compared to FY twenty-three. It's compared to the FY twenty-one report.
So you're FY twenty, so even though this says you're comparing fiscal year twenty-two, you're comparing fiscal year twenty-one.
No. Let me get back to that graph.
It says right at the bottom fiscal year twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-three. So if you're telling me it's fiscal year twenty-one, you're off a year.
Higher information where I give you the summary. That's comparing two full years. This with the graphs is showing you trends that we're seeing. If we look at half of FY twenty-three and compare it to all of last year.
Which would have been fiscal year twenty-two.
Right.
Right, because we're in fiscal year twenty-three. So fiscal year twenty-two, it looks like you served around, I don't know, just under a thousand in shelter. But it's, looks like your trend in twenty-three is the same. That's, that's what I'm. Okay, so my question is because you talked about a thirty percent increase, but I'm not seeing that. I'm seeing the exact same.
Because that increase is from FY twenty-one to FY twenty-two. I compare years because this report is an FY twenty-two report for last fiscal year.
And wouldn't you use those numbers to project? Aren't, aren't you using that increase to project what will be happening in the next year, I think?
No, I am not. This FY twenty-three is showing you where we were. The actual number and how it compared at the same time in FY twenty-two. So these are through January.
Oh, so, so it's not projected, it's actual numbers.
No, I apologize. It is projected.
Okay.
So we are projecting, we're gonna serve the same amount of people in shelter that we did FY twenty-two. As we're going to in FY twenty-three.
Okay, tha- that's what I was wondering.
Yes.
Earlier in your report, you said you're doing thirty percent more.
I think that.
I, I, so I'm just a little confused. That's why I'm just a little confused.
But that's compared to FY twenty-one.
I think I see this, Lisa, on page three.
Yeah.
Or page four.
Oh, okay.
FY twenty-two, twenty twenty-two has many successes. Is that where you're getting the thirty?
Yes, yes, and I see.
It's twenty-two to twenty-one.
One to thirty, but you're not comparing from twenty-two to twenty-three, what you're looking to be.
Not in the summary. The summary's comparing the years. And then the current, anything with FY twenty-three. Is trying to give you an idea comparatively to FY twenty-two, what things are looking like for FY twenty-three.
But you're not making percentage comparisons because you don't have a full twelve months yet.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is your phone answered twenty-four seven?
It is, and, but we have one staff overnight. So if they are on the phone, or if they are working with a client, it may not get answered. So what we tell everyone and the police is to leave a message. Every hour, staff review messages and triage them to call back the most immediate needs first. If they don't leave a message, then we don't know they called. The other thing we have, um, worked with, with the police is to tell them. You don't have to call. They can bring the folks to the shelter. And then our staff will go through the assessment process to see if there's a way we can divert them. If shelter is full and try to get a plan going for that individual. So there's a couple of options and during the, the storm, I spoke with the chief. And so he asked me, is the process still the same? Can we bring people, just bring them to the shelter? I said, yep, you can just bring them to the shelter. Um, so. We, it is twenty-four seven, but we usually have one or two people there. If somebody's on the phone talking with a potential client, that's at least a thirty-minute phone call.
If the police brings somebody to the shelter, do they have to wait with them?
No.
And if you can't find a place for them, do they have to come pick them up?
No.
What happens then?
Well, we'll work with them on how they would like to be divi- diverted. There's a lot of different options depending on what they would like to do. They, they may choose to go back to the street if we don't have a bed.
Do you exceed beyond the two-bed hotel room capacity often? I mean, often would you exceed that?
So now when the weather is extreme. So the reason this year it's different is because we had COVID dollars. From HUD that were supplementing shelter, uh, allowing us to open more motels. That's gone. So now we have to, you know, work within the budget we have for the county for the number of motel rooms.
Have you tapped into any of the, I believe the county and the city have emergency funding for shelter? Have you been able to tap that?
We've sent our RFPs in. And I know Sandra did help us out at one really bad storm allowed us to. Open up our doors as many as we needed for that.
Great. And then you also mentioned that, um, a stay is thirty days.
Yep.
A hard stay or is that?
Yeah.
An up to, uh, is that a hard thirty, or are there some exceptions made for beyond that? That, okay, you've maxed your thirty days, that, that's it.
Yeah, so the exceptions would be, we have a family who has an apartment unit that is. Seven days before it's gonna be ready for them to move in. And they're on day thirty. We're not gonna put them out on the street for seven days until they can get into their apartment. That would be the only reason we extend.
So if somebody's been a part of you for thirty days and let's say bad weather comes in or else, they would still have to, oh, because they've exceeded. Thirty days. That's thirty days. I, I understand, but I.
That's gonna be a. Call at that point, you know, if it's gonna be minus eight hundred and Jim's on day thirty, we're not gonna say. Off into the Antarctic gym, you know, that's gonna be a call made that day. Um, we don't want people, it, it, the thing that terrifies us most in the winter is somebody's going to die on our street. And I don't know that me or my staff would ever be able to deal with that, knowing that it happened. Because we don't have enough space for people. So we. Yeah, it'd be a circumstantial, what do we got going?
Go ahead. So when you, when you say someone comes into shelter, does that also include participating in programming? Like the total number of individuals who entered shelter? Nine hundred and fifty-five individuals and then. Our housing programs, rapid rehous- rapid rehousing, transitional housing and those, four hundred individuals. But so when you say came into shelter, does that also mean and then entered into these programs?
No. So when people come into shelter, we do assign them a caseworker. We do try to get them to work on a plan to housing. That doesn't always happen. And so there are times at the end of thirty days that people have to exit. And they've not done work on their plan to housing. Um, you know, at that point, it's, uh, again, a discussion of. Do you have family? Do you have a support system somewhere we can send you to? And it's gonna be, be based on circumstances. Some people will exit shelter, go directly into their own housing. Because they don't qualify for a housing program. They don't, you know, maybe they've been on the street for a month. And they just gotten a bad patch, they're working, they just needed to kind of regroup, get some money saved up to make a down. The down payment and the application fee. And we can help them get very quickly then into their own housing and they're no longer in our program. Some folks can't do that and that's where they need the housing programs that we have. And if they qualify for them, that gives them that support system and wraparound services. That they need to be able to get themselves stably housed. So, you know, we can get them with, connected with respite services. Or, you know, get them connected with healthcare, mental health, whatever it may be, so that they can keep working to get stable.
Back to the, um, the new, um, campus, the family shelter, eighteen families, right? And that, um. My question that I found was, how will you have those units available if they're also used for long-term housing? How are you, I mean, right now saying there aren't enough beds, there's not enough space specific for families. And so the idea to build, wonderful, but if you're then also going to make those available for long-term housing, they're gonna be full.
There will be a set number. There will be criteria of what is the unit used for.
Uh, so besides the hotel. From how many, how many bedrooms do you have? Or how many folks can you house right now?
On our facility?
Yes.
We have eleven beds for men and a, uh, couch that's being used. We have six beds for women in the basement and we've put in two cots.
So I guess. Right, so I just kind of bounce off. Supervisor Faisal just said eighteen family units and going to be longer term. How, and I, I, I get you're looking at also building this other three-story facility for men and women. I'm assuming that's gonna be, you're not building that simultaneously, if I, if I heard you're, you've got to.
Leave pretty close, but, um, it may not be. But once that family unit is, is open, if we don't, aren't ready yet with the main shelter. That opens up two motel rooms for individuals.
So would you still then keep the main shelter operational with these eighteen beds?
Oh, yes.
As well.
Oh, yes.
And then you would have the funding in place.
Correct.
To provide all the, all the shelter service and, you know. Uh, longer term. And are you, what other, sort of other funding avenues? Uh, you've mentioned private.
Our funding right now comes from HUD. Um, we have several long-term grants from them for our housing programs. We get a bit from them for shelter, but they've been reducing that amount annually. And increasing the funding for housing programs. And so we get, we have several grants. I can give you all the acronyms, but, um, there, we have many grants with them. And then we have other grants, local grants that we write for. As well as our private donations and then asset. Um, between the asset providers historically, on our total budget. That's been six, nine percent of our total operating budget historically.
So with the reduction of HUD emergencies dollars, you'll have to rely on other entities.
Shelter, yes.
Shelter services.
Yep.
Any further questions? Um, one, just one last question. On page seven, um, one of the last paragraphs. Unfortunately, there are not many other resources in the Story County area that assist. Specifically with people in the general public who are experiencing homelessness. Is, is that, that sentence just kind of confused me a little bit. Is it compared to other people?
We are the only organization in, um, Story County that provides shelter. Uh, for the general population without any requirements. Um, we are housing first. Whoever comes to us, if they're not an unaccompanied youth, we can serve them. Whereas some of the other agencies who do provide a small bit of shelter in the community. Um, some of them are only men. They have a process that they have to go through to qualify for that program. Um, but we are the only shelter in Story County that serves the general population.
That, that helps. Thank you.
Yeah, and if you just, you know, again, looking at those numbers, you can see we also serve a lot of domestic violence. Um, clients, we help work with asset a lot because they're often full. And so we'll partner with them to get them in and then get them the resources they need through asset.
Excellent, yeah, yeah.
Um, I guess I do have one other question, um, and I appreciate, we talked about strategic planning, um, and stuff. And it sounds to me, from your HUD funding, if I understood correctly, that their shift is more away from emergency to more. Long-term, stable housing. I catch it, based on their funding. Am I correct in my assumption there or?
Away from congregant shelter. But then once people are in shelter, their expectation is they leave housed. That we're not just bringing people in shelter for a little bit and then putting them back out on the street to figure out what they're gonna do. And take them back in next year. Um, they want us and they, we actually get points added or taken away. When we report to them based on destinations that our clients go to when they leave shelter. So if we're putting people in shelter. So, if we're putting people in shelter for, you know, a couple of days and then they go out, that's gonna hurt us. Um, the goal is to end the cycle, not just Band-Aid it and give them reprieve and then put them back out.
So, has HUD provided any kind of toolkits for that process of transition from congregate shelter to more individual shelter, like a, a longer-term shelter?
Well, the, all of their programs have, you know, requirements, and this is how it operates, and this who qualifies for it. And, you know, this, this is what you need to do. So, we follow all of HUD's best practices in every single one of our programs that we provide, um, including outreach.
In the, in the thirteen or more years that I've either worked at Access or at The Bridge Home, the best practice through HUD has been to, to get people into shelter and within, like, thirty days homeless to housed, to get them into housing. In fact, you know, our case management services, uh, to be able to climb through them is, like, pretty much cut off at thirty days. And so, like, if we are, uh, like someone in the rapid rehousing program, if they're literally homeless thirty days, um, and, and we know the same expectation, um, with, with the emergency shelter then too, is homeless to housed in, in thirty days or less. Um, it's, it's assets expectation that we, um, have, have folks out of shelter within thirty days too, so I mean, um, but ideally with two weeks, so that's one of the reasons why, you know, we, we brought up that, uh, HUD's expectation is that, um, homeless, uh, homeless exit, exit to destination from our shelter um, has to have a very high percentage of, uh, permanent destination. And it's right in, it's right on our grant applications. Uh, for example, what is your percentage rate if it's less than, like, ninety percent, seventy percent to a permanent destination? And then, uh, another question is, you know, to, to family or transitional housing, and you get less and less points all the way down to zero with the percentage, you know, high percentages, uh, you don't know, or back to the streets. So, uh, and another, another marker that we have to answer for is, uh, percentage of, uh, bed night use. So, you know, we're always really high full capacities. But, you know, if, uh, if we just said, um, you know, we, we don't have, um, a lot of staff, so we're gonna keep some of our beds open, although we would, we would lose points. So, we're, we're always, uh, at, at or over capacity. Uh, but they also, you know, keep an eye on what our case management ratio should be, so, to make sure that we are providing the services. So, if they say, well, you've got three caseworkers and each of them have forty cases, how can you actually be providing those services?
So, before HUD transitioned to, um, this more permanent housing model, and they were funding congregate shelter, what did that, what did that look like for The Bridge Home?
It's the same. It hasn't changed. Um, other than we are more, um, diligent in keeping people there for only thirty days. We are more diligent in making sure we know when they leave, where they're going. Um, when I came on board, people would just disappear and we didn't know if they went back on the street, if they got a house. We didn't know what happened to them. Um, people would also be there for eight months. Um, and not, there wasn't a lot of process, um, and expectations and rules as to how that at all kind of went in and out. And so, in looking at that, when I got there, talking with the staff that have been doing these things for years, and how do we do this? And how do we do this right, so that it's fair for the entire community? Um, and we don't have somebody in there for eight months just because, well, they don't wanna go to that apartment. They want a three-bedroom apartment and it's one person. Uh, we put in parameters, guidelines, programming, processes to make it so that we can give you these numbers, so that we can say, yeah, people are out in thirty days unless of that one exception. So, the money from HUD for shelter hasn't changed the programming of shelter. It has just changed the amount of dollars we get for shelter.
What is their answer to, I mean, the need still exists? Be someplace where someone can go, family or a single person. So, what is, does HUD address that at all? The, the hole that that's leaving in services?
Yes, um, they expect we get funding privately from our, uh, community members, as well as our county and city leaders.
But what does it look like?
What do you mean, what does it look like?
If, if congregate funding, if congregate housing is not, and I, I recognize it's not an ideal, um, solution at all. It's not a solution. But if that's not, um, other than having a big room where you can put cots out every night for people and just an overnight emergency shelter, they're not funding that situation at all?
No. And they have, I mean, they really never have. Um, you know, they fund our shelter where we have beds and, and we, you know, have the rules to just bring people in one night and then they're back out the next day. They don't fund that. Um, we have, an example is in, uh, Cedar Rapids, for example. Their shelter operates very similar to the way we do. And what they do, um, over the winter is the city allows them to use a school. And they've just put cots in there and have staff in, in that, so that they have that space additional in the winter. Um, you know, with the new structure of the shelter, uh, that addition of, you know, forty, having forty beds, one, gives us a lot more flexibility off the bat. But having that day center space also gives us flexibility should the, all forty beds be full and it's minus eight hundred, somebody could come in for the evening and, you know, hang out in the day center and, you know, maybe do laundry or whatever they need to. So, that gives us a, a bit of that flexibility. Of course, until we're actually in there and kind of assess, how much of that are we seeing? We won't know, but at least there's an option.
So, what I just heard was that your proposal for the shelter is to build a brand-new structure, whereas another community has worked to utilize an existing structure. I'm concerned about the amount of money that goes into new structures before staffing and maybe some creative reuse of, or some other things that could be done.
We explored that, Linda, quite, um, in-depth of what are our options? Where can we go to, if, for example, if we had a hotel or motel that was empty, most of them are out on the, in, on the highway. Um, that doesn't work for us to be there. By building the new building where we basically are, it allows the most access for people who have transportation issues. It is also, depending on the, the building you buy, it is not always cheaper to refurb versus build. And in building, you get to build it so that it works for the functions you need it to work, as well as make it. If you can put in geothermal, you can, you can just really work on the efficiency of the operations of the unit itself. So, in working with community members on our site advisory committee, which met for nine months, we explored, are there any of those options out there? And if there would be, would that be more economical? Would that, no. The best option was for us to build very close to where we are.
I just know what we're seeing with costs going up right now. Everybody's building costs are going up, and that's, that's why I'm saying, is there another way? That's concerning to me. I'm concerned that, that building a new facility is the longer range and how long until you can staff it? How long, you know, and, and a phase, partially staffing and then opening, it's gonna be several years. That's, that's just my concern. I don't have the answer. I don't know what you've looked at, but, but the new construction is concerning to me.
So, we have been, we have been working on this for pretty much since the day I got here. So, we haven't just all of a sudden said, cool, let's build this. It'll be fun. Um, we have done our due diligence. We have worked with experts in the community who know about pricing, recognize, yeah, building things right now, you never know. That's why when we first started talking about it, it's like, well, we're not gonna go wood, cuz that's really expensive. So, all of this is being vetted, thought through, and planned, so it's sustainable and it works. Myself, as a leader, I would never, ever jeopardize this organization by putting them into a situation that was not sustainable. That is not who I am. And that's why we have a heck of a group of really good experts working with us on this and planning it out very strategically, so it does work.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you for the report. We appreciate it. Um, I know we all look forward to seeing the strategic plan when you get it done. I think that'll help a lot, too.
Thanks. We're excited to share. Thank you very much. And as always, if anything else comes up, reach out.
Thank you. Okay, moving to consideration of minutes from February twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three.
I move approval of minutes.
Second. Moved and seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Faisal, aye. Consideration of personnel actions?
Of approval of personnel actions as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Faisal, aye. Consent agenda.
I move approval of items on the consent agenda.
I second.
Moved and seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Faisal, aye. And we have no public hearing items today. Uh, moving to additional items, we have consideration, right? Use lease asset policy.
Good morning.
Good morning, Board. What you have before you is a, uh, policy. Um, please note that we are already in compliance with GASB eighty-seven. What we lacked was a written pol-, a specific written policy. I think our financial policies say that we will follow all of the governmental accounting standards board, um, directives. So, um, I am in the process of sort of melding this into our financial policies, but that was not on the same, um, timeline that the state auditor wanted me to be on for releasing our, uh, FY twenty-two audit. So, I'm bringing you a standalone policy. I am in the process. In the future, you'll see this folded into a, a larger policy. I don't like to have a bunch of standalone policies. It gets really confusing for people. But in the interest of time, I'm, I'm bringing the standalone policy. Um, we are in compliance with GASB. And, uh, if you have any questions about that, basically, all of the GASB directives, um, just add more clarity and transparency to governmental accounting standards and also sort of standardize them across entities so that it's easy to compare Story County to other like jurisdictions. Um, just, just makes, uh, any, those lease liabilities more, um, apparent to an outside observer, so.
And you're asking to waive the seven?
I'm the, so I'm asking to waive that, um, so that we can finalize our audit report. Um, again, when we went through our audit, we, we, we had, we had all this in place. We actually work with, um, a vendor right now to both do our, um, lease and our debt service calculations. It's, um, you signed that contract last September, so. Yeah, that's why I'm asking for a waiver is, um, it's, it's basically just putting into written form what we're already doing. Uh, specify that, so. And any questions for me?
I do not.
Uh, I move to approve the right-to-lease asset policy and waive the seven-day review.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Faisal, aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Moving on to departmental reports, facility management quarterly report. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Board. Oh, I just have a few things to add to the report that you have in front of you. Um, you can see, work orders that we closed, a little higher, but that's kind of our average, you know, they fluctuate a little bit. Um, under general information, you can see, we filled our second shift maintenance assistant position. That's been kind of a, almost a year-long process. Uh, just, we did a lot of shifting and, uh, filling positions within our department. And, uh, so as of today, we are fully staffed. Other than April seventh, Erin Borton is retiring, so. It's gonna be a big loss for our department. Um, been with us over twenty years. Um, but we have started to recruit for that, so. Just so, yeah, just about the time we get full staff, we, we'll be down another one.
What, what was the date?
April seventh. He doesn't want a huge, he, he asked me not to make a big thing about it. So, if you know Erin, you know that he just likes to slip out without making a scene, so. Um, been, uh, busy at the Justice Center. I mean, that's where a lot of our attention's been the last almost two years. But that big HVAC project is almost done. We are down to, it's all punch list items, yeah, right now, which we're looking at. We should have everything wrapped up the end of the month. Well, yeah, there's, uh, it was, ended up being a total of a hundred and one pieces of equipment. Um, since we, uh, turned this into Shelley, we have, everything is in place and setting. There was some rooftop equipment that hadn't been swapped out yet, but it is. Of that hundred and one piece of equipment, we have three heat pumps that are currently not running. They got minor issues that should be remedied this week and two rooftop units that we're waiting for startup on. So, that's happening this week as well. So, then just some fit and finish items interior-wise, and we can put that one to bed just in time to maybe start one at HSC, cuz the twenty-eighth of this month, we're gonna, month, we're gonna open up some beds again. So, we did change that scope and we're hopeful that one'll look better this next go-round. Um, and at Justice Center, we just doing a flooring project there as well. Um, we're recoating all the showers in the jail, so. With that, we've been doing a lot of behind-the-scenes plumbing work as we take the, clear out a, the cell block, and we do some of the plumbing upgrades while they're working on the floor. And that should be wrapped up the beginning of next week. That thing's been going on since January, first, full week in January, we started it, so. Busy pulling cable. We're doing camera projects here in the HSC, so. A lot of cable. Other than that, that's all I had additional to what's already on there. Questions, gladly answer them.
No questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, I, thanks for all the work that, uh, your team did when it was snowing and getting, making sure that the sidewalks were safe. I know that was just a constant.
Yeah, that ice.
Put the melt down and it's frozen again.
It's tough, yeah. It's that cold and it's, and we get the ice right before it's hard to get that.
Yeah.
Salt and sand. And we got, this building's got some new concrete too, so we don't, can't put salt on it that first winter. So that always is challenging. So we sand and some chicken grit, but we might, looks like Thursday this week, we might get to play in the snow again.
Yeah, well, we know your team is, is here before all of us, just like secondary roads is out before all of us. So thank you and, and others, I know there are others. So thank you.
You're welcome. All right, thank you.
And next we have auditor.
Oh, sorry, we do have auditor.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Mike, I'm sorry. I turned the page and things were cut. Quarterly report for conservation. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, no worries.
You'll want to bring that mic, bring the mic closer.
Yeah, yeah. I know we sound loud, but that's because we're so close.
Is that good?
Yeah.
All right, well, how hit some of the high points in what I submitted? If you have any questions on anything I'm not going over or whatever I am going over, feel free. First off, McFarland Park, our restoration project there on the lake.
Sorry, Mike, could you even bring it a little bit closer?
A little bit.
Yeah.
The restoration project is underway at McFarland Park Lake. The weather this winter has not cooperated with, with our contractor on that project. So unfortunately, we're, we're a little bit behind schedule. We do have a significant completion date on that of this fall. So we knew it was going to take a long time, but under ideal conditions, they would have been able to get a majority of the lake dredging done this winter. We have not been under ideal conditions by any stretch for that purpose. The contractor, we were really hoping for colder weather that would have driven that frost a little deeper and made that dredge material more manageable. So we haven't had that and so it's hard to dredge. So at the moment, they're looking at mechanisms, if you will, to try to anticipate the coming moisture and allow that to get through the basin of the lake without, with, I guess, minimizing the, the latent moisture in what needs to be dredged. So they're looking at ways that, that we can do that. But overall, we still do have quite a bit of time before substantial completion. So hopefully the weather does cooperate at least enough to get the dredge project done within that allotted time. But we all know how that works and we're at the mercenary of Mother Nature with the project. Heart of Iowa Nature Trail, we still have not heard back on the Destination Iowa funding. We have heard that we were underscoring, that we were in scoring, but we haven't heard the results of that and it's been some time. So we're still just having our fingers crossed on that. We have secured funding to move forward with the next phase, which we call Phase Three, which would be from the Skunk River Bridge in Cambridge over to S fourteen. And so we are in design on that. At the moment, we're waiting for cultural review on that section and hopefully we'll be able to do a bid letting this summer. Hanum's Mill is another one I just want to touch on briefly. Hanum's Mill Dam mitigation project. You may recall that we did receive a grant from the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for mitigation funding that that covered a portion of the cost. We have then submitted additional grant applications to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for some additional fish, fish passage grants. So we should hear back on those fairly soon. Our idea is that we can cover the lion's share, if not all, of the cost of that project through grants. Linda was at the Edge of Field Day this last, Kelly, it was this week, last week, last week, so.
Last week.
Thanks for attending that, the Edge of Field Day. Edge of Field Practices Field Day was hosted in, in cooperation with the City of Ames and other partners on the project. It was pretty well attended. And then they did an indoor portion of explaining the practices and the project at the Ames Water Treatment Plant and then went outdoor to one of, outside to one of the implementation sites. And people got to see saturated buffer being put in. That particular practice site, saturated buffer is probably the biggest one that's ever been put in in the state. And so we're, we're proud of that. I think that was treating in the neighborhood of four hundred acres on that, that practice. So that was incredible. Nice to be able to see that. Mike Nag was there. Senator Feenstra's office was in attendance and so it was, it was, it was well attended. Several landowners were in attendance, as were several folks that work in the field. So that, that event went quite well. Down to the bottom of the page, under events and minis, and environmental education, the last bullet there, I just want to note. You, you are all quite familiar with YSS's Amber Project. And just I wanted to note that we have been working with them on programming. And you know, their tenant is really, one of their tenants there is to look at how nature can be therapeutic. And of course, that aligns perfectly with, with our mission and what we want to accomplish. So, so it seems to be a lot of synergies there and, and we'll work together to see how we can best bring that forward. So it's a real exciting project to be able to work on together with, with YSS, which is doing wonderful things in the community. Briefly, on our natural resource program, I just want to mention that we've had a number of volunteers that, we have a new volunteer program, we call it Natural Resource Stewardship Program, Stewart Program. We provide a little higher level of training on that program and we cover the cost of their chemical applicator's license. And so there are, those volunteers are able to go into the field, work independently and remove a lot of invasive species. And they have been doing yeoman's work. It's been going really well. They've been, it's amazing how much work they've been done. They've, they have contributed hundreds of hours right now in, in doing that. So it's, it's nice to be able to have volunteers that are so committed to helping us manage resources and invasive species. So that's been wonderful. Sensitive areas inventory, you know, that we, this has been a multi-year project. We wrapped up all of the field inventory work. And now we're looking at mechanisms that we can kind of enable or facilitate private landowners to take care of what's on their land. So if we've got a landowner X that, that we know has some significant environmentally, environmental areas and they want to do work on that, then we want to provide them, we want to be the catalyst, if you will, and provide them the information that gets at where they can find resources to, to work on that or to make those improvements. And so we're excited to be able to, to do that. Similar to the Edge of Field Project, one of the reasons that the Edge of Field Project is so successful is that it, it groups available resources under one umbrella. And this would do the same thing, not on a financial level on the part of the county, but just in compiling those resources for landowners. So they don't have to shuffle through the mountains of information out there in order to provide, in order to find those avenues for assistance.
Mike, can I interrupt you for just a second, just so I don't lose my thought? I'm, I'm glad you bring that up because at the planning and zoning meeting, the last, gosh, just last week, there were a lot of comments from landowners about the ordinance and looking for assistance if they are wanting to, I mean, they want to be good stewards of their land also. So it, it sounds like there's still a lot of outreach that, that needs to happen because there was, there wasn't a, a lot of awareness that those resources were available to people. So happy to, to help you get that figured out, like how we, we push that information out to people.
That, that'd be great. Amelia and I have chatted about that a little bit and that, that I was at that meeting. And so that was one of the things that came to mind to, to me as well, that hey, we need to, you know, kind of step this up a little bit and make this available to people. Those resources and, and some of those compilations are out there. ISU Extension has a compilation. But the one we're working on would be a little bit more tailored to Story County residents. And so, yeah, agreed, I, I agreed. I think that that could be an important thing to offer to folks that do want to do work on their property. Speaking of other properties, Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation right now owns the, you've heard us refer to the DEPI property in the past. That's the property just south of McFarland Park. And Natural Heritage Foundation is the title holder on that right now. We have received some grant funding to go toward that project and we're getting ready to do a public camp fundraising campaign. The, as far as land management goes, we anticipate that that area will be farmed this year in, and in preparation for prairie restoration on it. So we anticipate it'll probably be two to three years of farming practices before it's ready to be restored to prairie. We need to get rid of a lot of the cool season grasses and plants that, that compete with prairie. It will be farmed with no-till practices. So that's one thing that we felt pretty concerned about, that wanted to move forward with that, that the DEPIs have put a lot of soil conservation practices on the site. We want to make sure that we're doing the best we can with farming practices to mitigate any soil loss. Last thing I want to particularly point out is the last bullet. And that is that we are currently working with a consultant to look at installing a solar array at Dakin's Lake. The idea of that solar array is to cover as much of the electrical demand as possible. And we would consider entering a power purchase agreement. A power purchase agreement is essentially a mechanism that a third party designs, constructs, owns, operates a solar array. And then the consumer, i.e. the county, buys power from that provider instead of buying from the electrical provider. And so that's the mechanism that we're looking at. And so there'd be no cost upfront. All it would be, would be, all the cost would be, would be, you know, purchasing that, that power at a lower rate from the solar provider versus from the electrical provider. Now, there probably would not be a battery system. So we wouldn't be able to alleviate all of the purchase from the electrical provider. It would, we would still purchase some from the electrical provider, but a lion's share of the purchase would be from the solar array provider. Probably a thirty year agreement with options to purchase the equipment prior to that and terminate the agreement if so desired. Otherwise, let it be until it run, let it run its course. The, the array, when you look at a thirty year lifespan, the array will, I think, can save in the neighborhood of a quarter of a million dollars in electrical demand over that thirty years. So long term, it's a win-win, it seems like. Again, no upfront cost and we're buying electrical power at a reduced rate because it's solar. We, being the, the county would not be able to reap all of the benefits from, i.e. tax benefits that are offered to solar consumers. We couldn't get those benefits, a third party can. And so that's one of the reasons that it works. The math works for the third party, the provider as well, is because they're able to get those incentives that are offered. So again, we're just, we're, we're kind of in the, I'd say eighty percent level or eighty percent progress of looking at an, at an agreement and in, in conceptual review, design of a system. There's a few more things that, that we need to look at, but ideally, we'd be coming forward oh, in the next month or two with a final agreement to consider.
So no upfront cost with us and reduced, overall reduced electrical bills?
Correct, correct. No upfront cost, reduced bills. The provider is responsible for all the maintenance. Should any arrays go bad or any problem with the system, then the provider is responsible for that. So none of that obligation on the county. We're just simply the, the buyer, the client on the power that gets produced there.
What's the catch? I feel like there should be a catch.
Yeah, right, right, right. But yeah, there, there isn't. It's just, it's a good system. We have the, I guess we have the mechanisms in place with assistance to the provider that makes it feasible for them. And when I say we, I mean the, the big we in this country. There are this, there are those rebate systems and, and incentives to, to make it pencil out for the provider and to our benefit.
And we have the space for the array. Where? Yeah, we have the space for it.
Yeah, we're looking at different spaces and, and also the question comes to mind, well, what if we ever increase the electrical demand there? And all of those things are being considered right now. It's easy to add to the system. It's easier to start with a smaller system and add to it as long as you anticipate your future demand and build your, your sizing appropriately in the transmission lines, et cetera. And so, yeah, we think we can, we've got a location that, in mind there that, that would work well. So one of the things we'd have to do is the current, I guess, not to get too far into the weeds, but we have to have an independent array for each meter. And we have several meters at the park. And so we have to figure out a way to route them to make that, make that worthwhile. We are also looking at, looking at our, looking at combining some of those meters with our electrical provider. So maybe that will be a little bit easier to do a little less wire, you know, wire routing and, and combine some of those meters. But those are some of the final details we're looking at.
Is the thought that the solar, it would be self-contained? Because usually when there's solar, the, the, the electricity that's generated goes out into the whole wide electrical network, right? And then you buy credits back. Is this just only for the park?
Yeah, one of the reasons that it works, of course, the park is on the grid. One of the reasons that that works is because the provider that's for that park has a better solar program than other providers. And so they do allow that, they do provide for that buyback and net metering. And so with that, it, it makes it more feasible. And so, yeah, that does, that does take into account net metering so that they would buy back power that we're not. Um, yeah, that does, that does take into account net metering so that they would buy back power that we're not using.
Okay, so, so it's in cooperation with the existing electrical provider?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So, something we're excited about and hopefully we can. Um, we can look at this at other facilities as well. However, right now. And I mentioned the solar program for that provider. We have different providers and of our different major electrical consumption facilities. Um, all of the others are on different providers that don't have as good of renewable program. As the one at Dakens Lake.
Yeah, Mike, I'm, I'm sorry.
So right now Dakens Lake is the low-hanging fruit for uh, for a solar array. Our other facilities don't look that. The numbers don't work as well.
Ash tree removal.
What's that?
Ash tree removal. You have a lot of them?
Well, we've done quite a bit um already and, and yeah, we've, we've still got a few to go.
Is, I don't know if you heard Sarah say the other day that one of the high costs of the. Midfield practices, particularly the bioreactors, was what twenty-seven dollars a cubic foot?
For chips?
Chips. And, but that you could use dead ash trees that, I don't know, yeah, the ash borer had gotten, they could be used.
Yeah.
I suppose it's a translog problem, but is that something that? We could consider talking with some of the people who are putting the bioreactors in?
We've considered that and we probably need to sharpen our pencils on that. What we've looked at to date, it has, the math hasn't worked for it. Um, but yeah, I think that's, that's a good idea, something that we've been wondering about as well. And so maybe we do need to sharpen some pencils on. Does, is that feasible to uh provide that material?
Okay, thanks.
And that is it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
Okay, moving on to other reports, ARPA quarterly report for March twenty twenty-three.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The report that is before you this morning is from October of twenty twenty-two through um January of twenty twenty-three. Um, I'm going to go over just some highlights. And not really delve into the details unless you have specific questions. I do want to talk about. Um. Subrecipient seventeen a little bit and give some additions on that. That's United Way of Story County. Um, but just some quick overviews, there are thirty-three sub-receipients um that. Are required at some point to do quarterly reporting. Um, of those thirty-three sub-receipients, we have contracts with all of them except for the city of Cambridge. The Bridge Home, the City of Ames. And then Colonesco School District for the Childcare Development Center, as well as our broadband providers. Um, just some updates on those with whom we don't have contracts. The city of Cambridge, we think. Hopefully have finalized their SAM.gov um registration. Thanks, thankfully to the, with the assistance. Uh, Congressman Feenstra's office. Um, the Bridge Home is under review by our legal department at Story County. And I have not, um. I'm not gone any further than sending the contact sheets with the city of Ames and Colonesco. I'm waiting to hear back from them. And then once I get that information, we'll start the actual agreements. Um, so really that's in, that, it's in their ballpark or in the, yeah, it's in their hands on those two. The broadband providers, um Ethan Anderson also has the agreements. I did reach out again this morning and see where he was on those. Um, but. Those, they all know, the broadband providers know they have received this allocation funding from Story County. Now it's just. Getting the pieces to fit in place. Um. As you go through the quarterly report, you will see a majority of the sub-receipients have not yet submitted any claims. While some have done some work and you'll be, you'll note that through whether's. Under uh fifty percent completed, under or over, fully completed or not yet started. Um, we do have several that have filed claims last quarter. Um, that would include the whistle stop. And Navy is approximately four point six percent of the two hundred fifty thousand dollars that they were awarded. The Boys and Girls Club of Story County has submitted claims, an amount of thirty point three three percent. City of Collins, um, for their wastewater project, has submitted claims for approximately thirty-one point five percent. Of their award of two hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Um, also the city of Collins for the Economic Relief Program. Has submitted almost a, a little over half of what they were awarded for claims. Um, Heartland Senior Center did submit a claim for the entire three hundred thousand dollars during the last quarter. And then Project Iowa, um, is at about seventeen point six percent of the one hundred thousand they were awarded. And then the A E D C through the Workforce Program is about sixty point seven percent of the total award of six hundred ten thousand four hundred fifty dollars. Um, in the last, since January, um, additional sub-receipients have filed claims. We're starting to see the momentum build now. Um, Y S S Primary Healthcare, uh Nevada Food at First have all submitted claims, as well as Good Neighbor did reach out this morning. Um, when they filed their quarterly report, they thought that was finally a claim. So I responded accordingly with the link to the, the request form and everything. Um, so I anticipate over the next, the next quarterly update, you'll be seeing a lot more claims that have come in. Um, during the last quarter as well, we've amended the contract with um. Actually transferred the con, the memorandum of understanding with the Ames Economic, Economic. No, the Ames Chamber of Commerce Foundation to just the Ames Chamber of Commerce. And the United Way with Story County contract was amended. And there may be a request from the Boys and Girls Club to amend that contract as well, in very foreseeable future. Um. I do also want to note, um, when I, I mentioned some additional information for subrecipient number seventeen. That's the United Way of Story County and that's reimagining what's next, the um two-on-one. When I was looking at the prepar, preparing for this morning, I noticed that um, the report that they had filed was through September. I had seen that before, but I'd forgotten to reach out to Annika. I did this morning and she gave me information from the. From October to December on the two-on-one call. So I will forward that onto the board. Um, but as she noted, and if you look through that report in detail, um, really housing and shelter remains the top reason. Individuals from Story County are dialing that nine-one, or sorry, two-on-one for assistance. Um. Do you have any specific questions on the report? These are going to continue to get larger and larger. Um, my next few steps will be over the next, um. This week and next, I really am working on building the dashboard. Um, the online dashboard and, and taking a lot of this information, putting it out there for the public to be able to. Uh, to digest and, and for the transparency factor. Um. I'm wondering if I may have to do another round of ARPA training. Um, I really am hesitant about doing it, but I may consider doing it on, on an annual basis, just a refresher. Um. It takes a lot of time to do that. By, I did tape, uh, we did the last one via Zoom, so that's available to share with. Subrecipients. Um, but maybe something more a half hour that I could just do myself and have them, have it available for them if needed. Um, I also want to start revisiting the access database. I didn't spend any time on it until we, I knew we were at about the ninety percent mark on the contracts. And we're there. So I, I'll be revisiting that. And then starting in July. June and July, I'll be out. Well, it's July mainly. I'll be out doing the onsite side visits. So you'll see my calendars are. Kind of clumped together in times, but starting May, I need to start preparing for that. Um, but I, in the training I've done for the sub-receipients, I've shared with them what to expect with that sub-recipient monitoring. And I've had no questions back thus far. And you'll, you saw, um. Boys and Girls Club was here, what, last week or the week before? Access will be here next week. Um, and then you'll start seeing them coming to you for their annual review, annual reports to the board. Are there any questions?
This is an excellent document and I know it's a lot of tedious detailed work behind all of this and I appreciate it. Um, the thing I'm looking, I'm looking ahead on is the, the December of twenty twenty-four. That all our funds have to be allocated and then out the door spent by December twenty twenty-six. And I'm just wondering. If you think we will need to reallocate any monies or do, does it appear now that? The grantees that we, that granted money to, that, that their plans are viable. And they'll be able to use the amounts granted.
I, I think, um, I'd like to revisit that question after next quarter. Uh, especially knowing the delay we had in getting some of the con, uh, the agreement signed. And the, the cause of the delay and, and majority of cases were the SAM.gov registrations.
Yeah.
Um, which was totally outside of our sub, sub recipients control. I'm, I'm very pleased to see some of the claims coming in now, and I hope I've made it as easy as possible for them, but I, I can't. Some of the, some of the, um. The responsibility definitely does lie on them to fill the paperwork correctly.
Sure, and I, I, I. I see some wisdom because there's a resource here to help in doing that and you're doing such a good job of that. Maybe that's some of the wisdom of um Congress sending some of the ARPA money locally. You know, because we, it seemed like we have the resources, you've been helping people with it, you know, the SAM.gov. You reached out to Feenstra's office, you know, you're, if they have, you're giving the training on all this and it seems like. You know, when you always hear local government's the best because it's most responsive, this is almost just an example of that.
True, absolutely. I, I will note through my Leadership Academy breakout group, um. One of the members is the grants manager for. Blankin County and in Indiana. Um, I've been able to work with him and just get some feedback on some of the approaches we're doing. Um, they don't, they don't have very many sub-receipients, but he does the grant management for all of, all of the county's programming. So I'm, we're going to work with him, look at the dashboard, what do you think? Is there some, another way I can enhance that too?
That's awesome.
Expertise. It's been a great program.
My other question is what is, what's the money we have now that's unallocated?
Um, I anticipated you ans- asking that and I forgot to look.
Okay.
Well, honesty, I said.
One out of two, one of the two things done there, anticipation.
I, I did, I forgot to look at the spreadsheet. It's under, it's on our S drive and I can, I can shoot it to the board. Because that will have everything that, that's the spreadsheet that Lisa maintains. That has um both our internal, external, and then broken down by revenue.
And there's a lot of spreadsheets out there, just send a link to the one.
I'll send the link.
And because that's one thing we need to, you know, and maybe after your next quarterly report, you'll have a better idea of, are we going to have to reallocate some money? And that would be the time to look at that unallocated and say, need to be making some decisions on that. But we can, we can wait, I think waiting for the next report would be good unless something comes up. That just needs to be.
Which will be, I'll be back, I mean, this was January, it's delayed. So it'll be back sooner, that rather than, it'll be like, oh, you're here already? I'm like, yes, I am.
Right, thank you. Any upcoming agenda items?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, um, now it's time for public comment. Number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can step forward to the table. Or raise your hand on Zoom if there was anyone. Seeing no one step forward, we'll close public comment number two and move to a liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements. Do you want to? Just hop over that and?
Yeah.
Move on?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
So now we're going to um have our closed session. So I need a motion.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five subsection one.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Uh, do I have a motion to come out of closed session? Oh, what do I do?
Have to do that. We just reconvene, okay?
All right. Reconvene, meaning of the Board of Supervisors in open session.
I move that we adjourn.
Approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good thing there was no second.
Would you like to amend your motion?
Well, there was no seconds.
Okay.
Oh, there's no motion.
So a motion to approve. Yeah, please. Turn your microphone on though.
Let's see. How do we do this? I move to approve, um. The annual performance review of the Director of Internal Operations and Human Resources.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil, aye.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye, we're adjourned.